Okay, are we all ready? Let's call the
Devin.
City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 at 6:00 P. M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Then that was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Milton City Hall and Piggly Wiggly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance, which is over Inga, the flag is over Inga's shoulder. And if we want to say this together, I pledge allegiance
Yes.
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Stands.
One nation under God
Under God.
indivisible
liberty
with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Inga, do we have anybody signed up virtually for public comments?
There is no one in the waiting room at this time, but there is someone named Kathy on the call, I'm not, or another call on the meeting. I'm not sure if she'd like to speak at all. And you just need to unmute yourself if you do. Then there's also a Galaxy S10E. If they'd like to speak, they just need to unmute, but those are the only two people potentially from the public.
All right, I did not see anyone unmuting themselves from the public, so I'm guessing that we're good to go forward with public comments. Okay, we have mayoral proclamations. I bet you guys are surprised. All right, so the first one is, and since we only have two, I'm going to read them. Emergency Medical Services Week, May 16th through May 22nd, 2021. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Milton and call upon all community members to appreciate the contributions which these Emergency Medical Service Teams make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life. And our second proclamation is to recognize National Public Works Week, May 16th through the 22nd, 2021. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, 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 facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Milton. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas it is in the public interest for our community members, civic leaders, and children in the City of Milton to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. And the theme for 2021 is stronger together. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim May 16th through the 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week. Further, I urge all community members to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies and paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. All right, congratulations, everybody, and thank you to all. All right, now, for our headlining event of the evening, we are going to share the Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force Public Awareness Video and members of the Rock County Leadership Academy fundraiser to hire dry water protections, I hope I got that right, to produce this video, and it's excellent, so join me in watching this very important public service announcement.
Okay, I'll push play now.
Push play.
Twelve. Twelve years old. That's the average age of initial entry into the commercial sex industry. It's a sick game of power and control, much like domestic violence. Controlling their every move, slowly isolating them from normalcy, reality, and safety.
Human trafficking is happening right here in Rock County. This isn't just a problem somewhere else. All 72 counties and all 12 tribes in Wisconsin have reported cases of sex trafficking.
This is a crime that is incredibly difficult to quantify, truly hidden in plain sight.
In movies, trafficking victims are kidnapped by strangers off the streets. But in reality, the vast majority of human trafficking is committed by someone the victim knows and trusts.
They might be intimate partners, members of a gang, business owners, or upstanding community members. They can even be members of their own family.
Human trafficking is an equal opportunity crime. It doesn't discriminate by race, gender, where you live, or economic status.
Human trafficking knows no bounds and can affect anyone, anywhere.
Human trafficking is not a choice.
Any youth involved in a sex act for anything of value, even food or a place to stay, is the victim of human trafficking.
There is no such thing as a child prostitute. This is called child sexual abuse, and it's illegal.
These crimes are difficult to investigate. They thrive in the darkness of vulnerability, silence, shame, and intimidation. But together, we can prevent trafficking by recognizing the signs before victimization even occurs.
Traffickers intentionally target youth that are vulnerable and then identify themselves as helpers. Those most vulnerable are youth with a history of trauma, LGBTQ youth, and youth from homes with substance abuse or fearful of maltreatment. Youth can be solicited through websites and social media platforms.
Watch for signs of psychological or physical abuse. Starvation, lack of sleep, torture, isolation, broken bones, bruises, dental problems, multiple sexually transmitted infections, forced pregnancies, and abortions. These can all be indicators.
Traffickers may lure victims with money, cell phones, and clothes.
Human trafficking is often a hidden crime. Victims may be afraid to come forward or seek help.
The only way not to find this problem in a community is to simply not look for it.
The Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force believes all youth in Rock County deserve the right to be safe.
It starts with community responsibility.
Create positive and healthy relationships with youth.
Become informed, share the information, and most importantly, if you see something, say something.
Say something.
Say something.
If you need help or see a possible human trafficking incident, don't wait. Call 211 anywhere in Wisconsin or your local law enforcement.
Thank you, and watching that with me, that is incredibly impactful. It was very well done, and I want to thank our chief for participating in that committee and all the hard work that that committee has done and continues to do and putting this out there as a public service awareness and continually reminding us that we all have a responsibility to keep our children and our youth safe in our community.
Thanks for playing that, Mayor. I appreciate you sharing it. Until I got involved in this committee, I didn't realize the types of cases that we see in our own community. And people who are at risk of victimization and people who could be easily become trafficked against their will. These aren't cases that happen frequently. We aren't overrun by it by any means, but now we know what to look for. And when we know better, we do better. So I'm pleased that the group put this video together. I was honored, frankly, to even be asked to be a part of it. So thank you for including that tonight.
And
You're welcome.
Just, just quick, the link is on the agenda, so feel free to copy and share it with anybody that you know.
Yep. Thanks, Inga. Any questions or comments from the council regarding this?
Just hope we don't lose our chief to Hollywood.
He has like a long-term contract. We have him for a long time.
You should have seen the lighting work they had to do for the bald spot, so I'm not sure that's in use.
Two pays.
You need one of those coat jack lollipops.
Yeah, and one other thing, I, you know, the, there's different areas that different staff are involved with in promoting community, and I just, you know, I thank the council for allowing our staff to join organizations and represent us in organizations and continually promote community efforts that make us all stronger and better. So. All right, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Public hearing, discussion, and possible action on final resolution vacating a dedicated public street.
So a few meetings ago, the Common Council approved a preliminary resolution to vacate a dedicated piece of right-of-way that has never been improved out in our industrial park. That preliminary resolution set forth the public hearing that will be held tonight, as well as the public hearing that was previously held at the Plan Commission earlier today. Again, this portion of right-of-way was dedicated but never constructed. At the time of dedication, it was the city's intent to construct a new north-south street in the far east side of the industrial park once development occurred with the advent of Claus and Quality Chocolates purchasing 169 acres. That north-south connection would no longer be possible and likely will be moved further to the east as it bounds their development site. So in order to create a more marketable development parcel with the 58 acres previously purchased from the Bellardi Family Trust, vacating this piece of right-of-way became, or this piece of right-of-way really became irrelevant and unnecessary. And to remove that from the, the CSM would allow for that site to be more marketable and would not prolong the process if a developer comes forward. So it's a kind of a preemptive action.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing on this agenda item. Inga, is there anyone that you see from the public would like to comment on this item?
So I'm going to start with someone named Teresa Keller. Did you want to speak on this item at all or a future item? You just need to unmute yourself. There's a button in the lower left-hand corner. Yeah, we should hear you now.
Hi, sorry. Um, no, I think we're good on this matter. Thank you.
Okay, are you here for a specific agenda item?
For the resurfacing and curb and gutter of Cottonwood.
Okay, sounds good. Then we'll come back to you for that item then.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, and then the Galaxy S10E and someone named Kathy. Did either of you want to speak on this item? You just need to unmute yourself. And there's no one currently in the waiting room, Anissa.
All right. I'm seeing no one in our Zoom meeting and no one in the waiting room for this particular public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing on this agenda item. Council, Ryan, any questions or comments?
No, no questions or comments.
Larry.
No, I do not have any. Thank you.
Devin.
No questions or comments.
Bill.
No questions.
Teresa.
No questions.
Linda.
No questions.
Did I get everybody? You're all over on my screen, like you're all in a different row, you're all in a different column, so it's hard for me to to keep looking for you. Okay, is there a motion? Linda.
I'll make a motion to approve the final draft. The final resolution of 2021-15 Vacating a Dedicated Public Street.
Second that.
Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next agenda item, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Public Works Resolution 2021-12 concerning the assessment of curb and gutter replacement for the Blanche Drive Public Works pavement.
I'll let either Howie or Mark, if he's on. Yeah, there he is. Take this one.
This summer, Blanche Drive is going to be repaved, resurfaced. And part of that, when we do the resurface projects, sections of curb and gutter are replaced also that are broken or have sunken so that it helps with the drainage of the street. Per the city ordinance, replacement of curb and gutter is eligible for assessment at half the cost of replacement. And that's what the public hearing is for, is for the residents to have a chance to speak about that. And after the public hearing and hearing the residents, if there are some that want to ask questions about it, then the city council would make a decision on the assessment based on the information and on the ordinances. And you should have received in your packet the information that shows the assessments per the property of what they would have to pay. They're half of the replacement cost. The other half is paid by the other users of the stormwater utility.
Right. Inga, is there anyone that's signed on or in the waiting room that would like to speak with this public hearing?
So we still have Galaxy S10E and Kathy, if they would like to speak on this agenda item?
This is, this is Kathy.
Perfect.
We just, we live, we live on Blanche Drive.
And if, if you can state your name and address for the minutes, that would be great.
Kathy Yeager. Address is 562 Blanche Drive. And we, we don't really have any questions. We just, we live here, we just, we're wondering when they were going to start and things like that. That's all.
Well, um, as of today, projected starting for the projects is after the first week of July.
Okay. Thank you.
And at this point, there's no one else in the waiting room, and I'm not seeing anybody else unmute themselves, so I think we're, we're good on this.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on Resolution 2021-12 Assessment of Curb and Gutter Replacement for Blanche Drive. And we'll go to council for questions or comments. Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions, thank you.
Ryan?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Hey, Sarah Mothen.
I'm move to, upon the, to approve the Resolution 2021-12 Assessing Properties Along Blanche Drive Project.
I would second that motion as presented.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next agenda item, public hearing, discussion, and possible action Public Works Resolution 2021-11 Concerning the Assessments of Curb and Gutter Replacement for the East and West Cottonwood Lane Public Works Improvement Project.
Okay, this, this project is also planned for this summer. This one is a little more involved. There's going to be a water main replacement on Cottonwood along with the replacement of the pavement. And there's going to be a sidewalk installation. Sidewalks are installed when we have a more than just a paving project where it's a major project as part of the project. None of those items are assessable items. The public hearing is for when we do the project, some sections of the curb and gutter are going to get replaced. And we try to keep it to the ones that are just broken or need drainage improvements. And per the ordinances, those are eligible for half of the assessment cost to the property owners. And the public hearing is for the property owners to talk to the council about their concerns about the assessment. And after the public hearing, the council would determine the assessments or, you know, are not assessments for the property owners.
I open the public hearing. It's nice to know nobody's paying attention, but in case I didn't, I'll open the public hearing right now.
And Teresa Keller, you guys wanted to speak?
Yeah, I personally don't have any questions, but my dad is part owner on this property, and he has a few, so I'm going to ping it over to him.
So first and last name and address, please. Thank you.
Yep, first name Teresa Keller, last name, or first and last Teresa Keller, address 24 West Cottonwood Lane. And my dad is Al Keller. What were your questions?
Okay, I, I want to, first of all, I would like to increase the size of my driveway.
Widen it.
Widen it. So how do I make sure that gets done? Because they're tearing out part of that, they're going to replace more that's currently a curb, and I'd like to make some of that driveway. What is the process for that?
Okay, for that, we would get you the name of the contractor.
Okay.
And he, he has subcontracted a cement, you know, the cement workers are different than the water main or the pavement, but that would probably be the best time is if you could contact, we'll get you his number and you could contact him. He can contact his cement contractor, and then you could make a private arrangement just for that part. Okay, for that.
Would we still be accessible for 50% because you're replacing that anyways, right?
Yeah, just for the curb, for that part, yeah. And if there's a driveway apron that gets replaced, that's part of the project. It's just the curb and gutter, so.
Okay. Okay, because we have, her entire driveway is part of the replacement marked.
It's all, yeah, it's all been marked.
Yes. Oh, okay. So her, yes, her driveway entrance there is marked as getting replaced.
Okay, because the, the driveway parts that we would take out for the street project, we would put back in, and, you know, and that's, that's part of the street project. The only assessment is the curb and gutter, so.
Okay, oh, that's cool. Okay, good to know that.
I just want to clarify, though. Are you saying that they could get it wider and they wouldn't be assessed for it?
The wider part, than anything new, the owner would have to pay, they'd make an arrangement with the contractor. Okay.
Yeah, okay, got that, great.
We just don't want to eventually, because I can't afford it, like, to do the whole driveway right now. I just don't want to end up like, I can't dish out the thousands of dollars right this minute, but I don't want to not be able to because the curb and gutter has already been done and set.
And I, I think you may have talked to Mark. Mark, did I talk to you already? And I think you said that I can't, once you guys replace it, we can't do anything for five years. We can't change that driveway entrance for five years. Because we like to get that, we'd like to make sure that's done, done now.
Well, you, oh, you can actually work, you could work on the driveway. It's the street blacktop that you can't replace for five years except for emergencies.
Oh, okay.
So if
Right, we could redo, it's just the streetway.
It's just the street work that you can't, yeah, we wouldn't let you take the blacktop out except for an emergency.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, um, and then another, how long, when is this, first of all, when is this project going to start?
It should start from the contractor today. He's thinking after the first week of July.
Okay. And how will that shut down traffic on this street?
You should have local access at least every night to get in and out. When they're doing the water main, there's going to be times when you, you know, you've got to work around the, the, you know, just the construction equipment, but when they, if they do pour concrete right in front of your driveway, you know, then there's going to be a, you know, a time when you could probably park on the street at night, but you wouldn't be able to drive in and out of your driveway. But otherwise, usually at night, it's almost always, you can always get back in and out at night almost all the time.
And during the daytime, how is how is traffic completely stopped during the day when they're doing construction?
They'll have, they'll have like just local only signs up. They do the traffic control. So it should only be the people that are supposed to be working there or live there on the street.
Okay.
Okay. And how, how long will this project take? Do you have any idea?
Mark, is it a, is there a
A couple of days. Months. Yeah, we've got a completion date. I think it's in October for final completion.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
All right.
It depends on the weather, or it does not depend on the weather?
Depends on the weather, and it would depend on when the contractor actually starts, so.
I got it. I can look quick.
Okay.
It's fine.
Well, will that affect parking on Rainbow if we have to have people walk from there to here?
No, that, that parking should remain the same.
Perfect.
Rainbow.
And Hilltop.
And Hilltop.
Okay.
That'll remain the same.
Okay.
Oh, are there parking restrictions of, you know, more than 48 hours lifted during construction times, or how does that work?
There, there isn't, on those two streets, there isn't a 48-hour, yeah, they're just
They're just sides.
Yeah, there, there's eventually a, a storage time. You can't be there, but, but yeah, the 48 hours isn't a, yeah, that's not an ordinance for that street, so.
Okay.
Okay, we're looking to be done in October.
Ooh, it's a lot of project, Tim.
But it depends on when he starts, so if he starts in July, it may be done a little sooner.
Okay.
Will maybe shutting off the water?
That's At certain times, everybody's water would get shut off when they put the, when they reconnect their service to the new main. That's usually only a, hopefully a few hours or a couple hour situation. And they're supposed to notify people when they do that. And they're supposed to notify people when they do that.
Okay. So it's usually a hanger on the door or something?
Yeah, it, it's supposed to be the twenty-four hours, right, Mark, before and not just.
An emergency.
Not show up at ten o'clock and shut your water off at ten thirty, so, yeah.
Okay. Yes, uh.
I'm good. You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
When they turn the water back on, is there sometimes discoloration in the water?
Um, that's from the, when they flush the hydrants.
Okay.
Um, there is, and that's, it's, it's just, there's just, um, a little bit of rust in the water. That's what it's from, so.
I was trying to cover all the things I can think of since people have taken time out to join our meeting. Anything else from anybody on this agenda item in the public hearing? Is there anyone in the waiting room?
No one is in the waiting room.
Alright. Seeing no further questions on our meeting or, and nobody in the waiting room, I will close the public hearing. And we'll take this back to council. Devon, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Bill?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eleven, assessing properties along East and West Cottonwood Project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for coming to the public hearing. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-one asphalt pavement preventive maintenance bid award.
So we received the bids for the project, uh, April twenty-ninth. Um, the project base bid includes chip ceiling of High Street between North Janzil Street and then going east to the city limits out by, uh, N E X. So that, that part of High Street. Um, the base bid includes, uh, chip ceiling merchant row, similar to what took place on Parkview Drive last year. And, uh, alternate two is fog seal, which is a different type of seal. It's a little bit lower cost, but needs to be done earlier in the pavement lifecycle. Uh, Newman Court and Catman Street, and then alternate three was a bid of a additional chip ceiling in the Lamar Manor area. The bids received, um, are listed in the table. Um, what we're recommending or is, uh, awarding the base bid and possibly alternates one and two. Um, awarding alternates one and two would require a, a reduction or a change in the allocation of the capital funding from the budget. We had, um, originally included thirty-five thousand for concrete pavement maintenance along Madison Avenue and Janzil Street. We, we could take some of those funds. Cover alternates one and two, if we wanted to award those, or else we could just award the base bid. We have not worked with Scott prior to this project, so there was a contingency in the recommended motion to, uh, make the award contingent on receipt of references and appropriate material certifications. They have since provided all of that information. And we have, uh, visited a couple of projects that they've done recently, um, in the last year or two, to, to just check their work and everything looked good there too, so. Contractor meets those qualifications.
Uh, questions or comments, Larry?
So, so Mark, I think I understood, but we, the thirty-five thousand then could be utilized, right? That's what I'm.
Yes, yeah, that's available. And the intention of that was concrete pavement replacement project kind of on an every other year cycle to achieve some economy of scale. Um, so rather than bid out thirty-five thousand concrete pavement work and dealing with all the traffic control that's required to work on those streets, we do it every other year anyhow. So it was unlikely we were gonna do a concrete project this year. But it would reduce the funding that we allocated for that.
Thank you.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Devon?
No questions.
Bill?
No question.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the pavement preventative major, uh, I'm sorry, maintenance project bid and alternate one and two to Scott Construction.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any further clarification needed by anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two, two thousand twenty-one four eighty-four ordinance prohibiting domestic animals at Central Park.
Um, this, this was the ordinance that we talked about at the last meeting. Um, we've had quite a few people running their dogs inside the fence at Central Park and they're not cleaning up after them. We have actually received a few more complaints about it this week and even one complaint about an aggressive dog bothering one of the volunteers that takes care of the field. So it's, the request is just to pass the ordinance so we can put up the signs that prohibit dogs inside the, um, fenced-in baseball softball area of Central Park.
Any questions, Linda?
Yes, I was just wondering, do we need to do this for all of our baseball and softball fields? Or is it, are we just gonna do it for Central?
Well, currently, this is the one that has a fenced-in area that, um, because you can close the gates, you can let the dogs run. And so that's why they're using Central. It's a big field. The only other field that currently is, um, completely fenced or gated in would be Liberty. And we haven't really had a, a situation there, so if, if that does occur, we, you know, we'd come back to council for a, you know, for a, a separate motion which would be similar to this. But that Central is the only one that we seem to be having a problem with right now, so.
Mark and I had a discussion when drafting the ordinance that the way it has been written is we can add additional parks into it if we need to in the future without too much of a hassle. So if it does become a problem elsewhere, um, they'll just be added as additional locations under this ordinance.
Are you good, Linda?
Oh, yeah, I'm good. It's kinda sad that we have to do this when we actually have a dog park that's a very nice one.
Yep. Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
Yes, uh, I, I just have one comment. Please, people in the public, keep your dogs on a leash. Don't allow them to run free when they're not supposed to be free. And pick up the dog's manure. Thank you.
Brian?
No questions or comments.
Bill?
I just wondered if there was a story connected with the horses.
Maybe in general items. Devon?
No comments.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one four eighty-four prohibiting domestic animals inside the fenced-in area of Central Park softball baseball field, approving first reading and waving second and third.
Larry, are you seconding that?
Yes, I will second. Thank you.
Mark? S?
So that's just, I, I believe I, I've heard that Teresa's saying wave the fir, prove the first reading wave second and third and then adopt. Is that correct?
Correct. I didn't say adopt, but yes, I like the way you said it better.
Okay.
Sorry about this.
Larry, you okay with that?
Yes, I concur. Thank you.
Okay. Any clarification needed for anyone? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application for seven forty-two East Madison Avenue.
So Terry Williamson, the owner of the, uh, business and residence at seven forty-two East Madison Avenue, the former Goodrich home, uh, originally requested a residential, uh, exterior improvement program, uh, application. Uh, but the C D A, uh, indicated that it would be more appropriate for Terry to apply for a commercial facade improvement grant as her property is zoned commercial. Uh, so she submitted, uh, the attached application. The only caveat to this one is, uh, through the program guidelines, you're only, um, allowed to request two grants over a four-year period. Uh, Terry has requested two grants over a four-year period, but has not requested the maximum amount. Um, so it would be a little bit of an, uh, of a, of a change, uh, if this was awarded. Uh, but because the, uh, differentiation is so nominal, um, I, I would be in support of approving this grant. And this would be the last improvement she would need to make to her facility in order to bring it back to its original historic, uh, complete historic restoration, so. I would be in support of, uh, of approving this grant.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Devon?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Larry?
No, no questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the facade grant.
Second.
All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Review of April financial statement.
No, nothing overly exciting. I did notice, uh, one clerical error on the general fund summary on the second page. I have the transfer to capital doubled up in the budget column. That is clearly a mistake. We did not budget five hundred thousand for capital, so other than that.
Shocking. I, I mean, it's probably not a surprise.
But other than that, uh, we're steady Eddie, nothing, nothing alarm, nothing alarming on my end that I'm seeing right now, four months through the, through the year.
Any questions or comments, Linda?
No, thank you. I don't have any.
Teresa?
No.
Larry?
No, thank you, Dan.
Devon?
No.
Bill?
No questions.
Ryan?
Nope.
Alright. We will move on to discussion and possible action regarding committee appointments.
There is just one additional committee appointment at this time, and that is for the zoning board of appeals, and that is Mr. Mark Dolittle that Mayor Welch is recommending for appointment.
Any questions or comments by anybody? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve Mr. Mark Dolittle for a three-year term on zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, there we go, that appointment. Oh my gosh, we're just checking these committee appointments off. Okay, so the next item is discussion and possible action regarding updates to the city of Milton's phase reopening plan. So I want, just wanted to talk a little bit about this because we had some kind of fast-moving things happen within the last few days, um, with different CDC recommendations and county mask mandates and all of those things. And when we were, when we were going into the pandemic, we had a lot of this, like really quick trying to be adaptive and, um, navigate the pandemic. Um, I feel, I feel like right now, even though we've had some changes, we really have an opportunity to be incredibly thoughtful about how we move forward and what that looks like, how we wanna, um, you know, create our, kind of our meeting designs with safety in mind. Um, not everybody is vaccinated and we certainly don't wanna get involved with any type of shame or anything like that. People have a right to make a choice about whether they get vaccinated or not, so wanted to take care and, um, consideration and how we move forward, kinda coming out of the pandemic, because as we all know, we've never done this before, right? We never moved into a pandemic and we have never moved out of one. And there is still unknown challenges with moving out of one and how meetings are structured, how we resocialize together, how we, um, you know, meetings are kind of a social contract. Um, and, um, so I asked, um, you know, to have this on the agenda as city staff to put it on the agenda, um, just so we can kinda keep it in mind. I don't anticipate that we're gonna make, um, necessarily a decision tonight. Um, because I do think it's important that we're, that we're thoughtful about this, and if you have questions, um, you know, we have to balance the rights of individuals and the rights and needs of the group as a whole and the needs of the community and, um, you know, how do we want this to look going forward when we think about access and, and equity and all of those things? So, um, you know, just something for y'all to think about, and then, um, I'll let Al talk a little bit about, um, the memo attached to this.
Yeah, so I think, I think, uh, the majority of your comments are related to the next item on the agenda. Uh, it made, it is, it is certainly tangential to this, uh, this item. This is the, the city of Milton's phased reopening plan, and really it's, the updates on the plan are, uh, very minor i- in terms of updating it regarding face coverings, uh, from the CDC guidelines. So there are just some small changes in there, um, regarding, uh, what CDC's guidance is that if you access facilities, you should wear a mask if you remain unvaccinated, but, uh, are not required to wear a mask if you are vaccinated. And so there's just some minor changes, and I apologize, I, I had included a redlined version, but I guess I didn't, so that's my fault. But there was changes only, I think, on three pages, um, and it was just to reflect the new guidance from CDC. It didn't change anything of any substantive nature in the, uh, phase reopening plan, so.
And, and I could bring up the redlined version if everyone, anyone wants to see it too.
And there's been, um, so our committees have, you know, continued to meet by Zoom. There's been different or, um, organizations that have asked about meeting, having meetings at City Hall and, um, you know, we can't ask people if they're vaccinated. That's not appropriate. Um, so just, you know, to be thoughtful about that, so even if someone comes in without a mask or, you know, we can't ask them if they're vaccinated. Inga, were you gonna share your screen or?
I wasn't sure if anyone wanted me to or needed me to, so I.
I think we should share the screen.
Yeah, okay. Let me find the first redlined area. Okay, so you can see the draft reopening. This is just some older information, so we took that out. Right here, this is phase two language, so in this bullet point, we're adding in that the splash pad will be open with council approval and based on the guidance from the Rock County Public Health Department, which is essentially what we did at the last meeting. Um, for phase three, just, um, cleaning up some language, no real changes there. Um, looking at this overview of phases, we have the wear a face mask or cloth face, cloth face covering. And in phase two, we changed it to know if fully vaccinated. And, um, we still have this language in here regarding meetings. We'll talk about that. And we still have this language in here regarding meetings. We'll talk about that in the next agenda item. And we have the note that counseling committees may resume in-person meetings. We can change that language if we want to. And then here I just have that the face coverings policy is going to be revised on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, as long as council's okay with it. So we have this additional language related to CDC guidance that was received on May thirteenth. And just some additional changes related to face masks based on that guidance. And I believe that Rock County moved to this type of language as well for their facilities and employees.
As far as I know, so did the city of Beloit.
So Rock County is now, is opening up the building to fifty percent capacity with no mask requirement for the public and for employees.
Janesville has not been requiring masks of employees for several weeks, from what I understand, so-
That's correct.
They haven't really changed anything.
And in this document, we have, um, the previous library reopening plan, and I don't know, Ashley, we talked on Monday, but I don't know if you have talked anymore about potentially making any changes to that, or, um, the library board, I believe you said, is just having you follow the city's, the city's whatever moves, I guess.
Right, yeah, so we haven't updated in a while. If you look at it, you can probably see that. But I do have a board meeting on June seventh, but the, the library board has kind of given me direction to follow what the city is doing concerning all of this, so we'll follow what the city is doing.
So I don't know if there's any question in that redline version, or if you wanted to see anything else at this point.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Devin? Larry?
Um, the only thing I'll say is it'd be nice to wait a while on meetings, only because I personally, and this is just Larry's personal, uh, I have trouble disseminating people's speech through the masks a lot. Um, I'm getting older, my hearing isn't quite as good perhaps, uh, but even when I work with clients, when I have a mask on and they have a mask on, even in a closed office, it's difficult at times to hear everything. So that would be the downside, or people in the community audience who are wearing a mask, unless they go up to a podium, it might be hard to hear them, so just my comment.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Um, Ashley, are you allowing groups to meet without masks in your conference rooms?
Um, we've been discussing that, we're allowing people to use our study rooms. Like right now, we have masks required in our library, um, for everybody. Cause I thought we were following a city policy with that. But I am allowing some small groups to use our community room with my approval. Like you said, we can't ask if they're vastic, vaccinated or not for mask.
So, um, if there's not any further questions or comments, we can, we've kind of talked a little bit about eighteen regarding in-person city council or committee meetings. Any additional comments about that? Ryan?
Not really.
Devin?
No.
Bill?
Um, you know, I think reinstituting, um, in face-to-face meetings does send a message. And, uh, you know, it is a positive message, but we don't want to send that message and then have to take it back. So, um, I guess my thought is, um, maybe a little bit longer, but, um, you know, at, at some point in the not-too-distant future, I think, uh, sending that message, kind of an all-clear message uh, is important. I, I, uh, so we wanna kind of hit a sweet spot, and I know that's real difficult. Uh, I think it's probably beyond where we are right now. Uh, and maybe it's a month, maybe it's two months, but, um, uh, I think that, uh, uh, we just continue to monitor and, uh, uh, kind of, uh, look forward to, um, the, uh, full in-person meetings.
Larry, any further questions or comments?
No, I think my previous comment said it. I, I'd be all in favor of seeing all of you in person again. I just think that, uh, the communication issue with masks on is difficult. So I'd be in favor, like Bill, of just holding off for a little while till we can take our masks off, but-
Teresa?
Uh, no, no questions or comments?
Linda?
I think that we need to make sure that each of us have at least had our shots before. I mean, I think we, most of us have, that are going to do it, have, have, have done it or are making plans to do it. So, um, I think that we need to wait. I do have concerns about the masks because I run into that situation myself. Um, it, it is hard to hear people when you're talking through, when they're talking through a mask. So I agree with that comment also.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep looking at it and talking about it and thinking about it.
The, the only comment I will make from a staff perspective, um, you know, obviously not all staff are vaccinated, uh, yeah, in, including uh, the group that would regularly attend council meetings. Um, and as you know, the council chambers is set up in a way that if everybody was to sit where they normally sit, there's no, there's no way to social distance. So we could easily change that. You know, we could sit every other seat, staff could sit out in the audience. Uh, but what we don't know is, is when is that next big public hearing? Um, you know, we start talking fire referendum or something, is there, is there gonna be a hundred people in the room? You can never anticipate that. I mean, I think we're all in favor of returning to in-person meetings, but those are just some things that we've talked about internally, about logistics. Okay, you know, if we do that, um, you know, how, how is it gonna work? And we'll figure it out, of course we will, but just additional food for thought, uh, in, in having these conversations. And frankly, if there are specific committees that want to meet in person that are generally very small, you know, I, I don't have any objection to that, so long as everybody's comfortable with it, and that's the important piece. I think if there's one committee member who says, no, no, thank you, then I think that they should continue to meet virtually. That's just my opinion, though, you know? And I know that, you know, there's a, there's a desire to potentially create a hybrid model where some folks can appear virtually and some folks can appear in person. There's some major challenges with that too, as Anita experienced on Monday during staff meeting. You know, it's, it's hard. Again, if that's the wish of the council, we will absolutely do it and we'll make it happen. But, you know, it'll just take some time to figure that out.
Yeah, and we want to make sure that however, whatever, however, whatever we design, that when people participate, whether it's the public or staff or, or elected officials, like, that there, there is an element of everybody feels included in how, what, how, and what that looks like. I don't know, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate everyone for just kind of being thoughtful and, um, and being willing to take our time with this. Um, because I know that in other areas, there's lots of, you know, kind of pressure on people, and I don't want there to be pressure on anybody, one way or the other. Like I, you know, want to make sure everybody feels heard and considered. Um, and that's kind of my plan, is the host of this meeting impartial in partnership with staff and all of you, um, to move forward. So I don't feel, I don't want us to think that there's something that we're racing back to. Like, this isn't a race. We all want to be comfortable, cared for, and healthy, and we want anybody that participates in our meetings. Um, so, I have to plug my laptop in. Second.
Did we, uh, did we need a motion to update the plan? Was that?
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful. That's, that's what we've done in the past, so in order to kind of remain consistent.
I would, I would move then to, uh, approve the updated reopening phased plan.
I would second that.
Okay, I, so I can't hear my picture on because I'm almost out of battery. Am I, the charger here doesn't actually fit my laptop anymore. So we're just gonna kind of wing it a little bit. So there's a motion and a second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, general items. Oh, any?
I have a general item.
Bill, just a sec. Bill, do you have one?
Um, uh, not a general item, no.
Okay, Ryan, go ahead.
Uh, this weekend is Civil War Living History Days. We're doing it again this year. It's back on. Um, it's gonna be warm, but should hopefully be nice, and we have a lot of activities planned, so hopefully we'll see a lot of people there.
The Mark Court family will be running the soda stand. Please stop by.
Awesome. Devin, any?
No.
Larry?
No, thank you.
Linda?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Okay, staff reports. Ashley?
I have a few things. Um, Jamie had a very successful Milton Mayhem Bike Scamager Hunt on Saturday, despite the rain. She had over eighty participants. That's pretty exciting. Um, Angela received a small Thrivant grant to create memory kits. Um, these will be for people who are experiencing dementia, memory loss, or cognitive impairment. So we're excited to get those created. Um, we also received a thousand dollar grant from the Milton Fund um, to create an underground railroad collection of books and audiobooks and DVDs. So I've been working with Keaton at the Milton House and Bill a little bit too, um, to get a list of these resources. So we thought it'd be a good idea to have these available at the library. Um, so people can learn more about this aspect of history, and it, and it's tied to Milton. And we have released our summer reading information, and we have tons of stuff going on for all ages all summer. So that's on our website and our Facebook page.
Thank you. Ashley, you guys didn't even know I was gone, did you? Um, Chief?
Uh, just one item. Uh, today, the entire staff participated in a training put on by Kathleen Miller, who is a mental health provider in Rock County, and also received the contract to do a countywide peer support organization program, something, I don't know exactly what she calls it, but across all, um, emergency services, including fire and police departments across the county. Uh, it's pretty exciting that we're pushing these concepts out more, getting it in front of everybody. We hope to have at least a couple decide to join on to the countywide peer support group, and, um, we can start taking care of one, uh, one another a little better. So stay tuned on that.
Excellent. As somebody that's, um, been trained a little bit in that, that is a huge opportunity for us. And I'm really glad that they got that grant, and we're participating and moving forward with it. And Jenny?
So there has been a lot of special event permits that have been applied for, and so that's exciting. The, so we're living history days, and then we have the Memorial Day celebration for the veterans. And then I just received all of the information for the Fourth of July, so it's pretty exciting. And we also have a Milton Mega Day sale that is coming up also. So right now, that's, that's been keeping me a little busy.
Yay. Yeah, all right. Sounds like we're moving on, trying to get past this pandemic.
And there are a few park rentals available too, so if anyone's interested.
Not July second?
First.
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 Okay, and Howie?
Um, we've got, everyone's hired now, and so they've all been working this week, so we're back to full staff. And otherwise, just working on a lot of the projects for the special events, just to get those finished and capital improvement projects, so.
Awesome.
Howie? Could I just, uh, thank you and, and all the public works people on that project on North Janesville Street? The extension of the apron after we got done putting the water, uh, there was sanitary in, um, you know, pe- paving that apron. Cause that section was all gravel be, uh, on that one end, uh, where the project was, and it's all blacked out now. So my dog and I enjoy it very much. We're able to safely travel along there, so.
That's good.
I just, I hope, I, I think other people appreciate it. I see a lot of bicyclists coming down along Janesville Street now, rather than going on twenty-six, so they're coming into town, so that's a good thing.
Dan, anything?
I don't have anything, uh, too exciting. I got draft financials, um, last week, so later this week I'll go through them and probably sometime, probably the second meeting in June, or the first meeting in July, uh, we'll have our auditors do the annual presentation.
Inga?
Um, I'd like to announce that, um, we received a two thousand dollar grant from the Milton Fund to put towards the entrance archway for Story Gardens, and we also received four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars from the Wisconsin Arts Board through the Creative Communities Program that they have for the Story Gardens entrance archway. So we're working to raise at least fifteen thousand to really make that piece, um, really spectacular to welcome people into the Story Garden space. So if you know anyone that wants to donate, let us know.
Mark, Al, Mark E., Al?
Um, sewer televising started this week.
When is the premiere?
Uh, a couple of weeks, maybe a couple of months. I don't know, depends when they get it back to us.
Cause like, maybe that should be how we, like, our first meeting back together, popcorn and movies.
Um, the, uh, Red Hawk, um, or Parkview Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension, that'll be going out to bid here for the next week. Just general stuff, looking at some stuff for the Stormwater Utility, and then just getting ready for the other projects to get started here.
Gotcha. Al?
Um, we had a very long, um, and fruitful discussion today with Claus and Quality Chocolates about their timeline. It is, uh, their, their intent and hope, uh, to have something to us by the end of June that we can begin the review process, so that's exciting. They want to begin construction in August, uh, which is aggressive, but, um, that's, that's the timeline they want to meet, so they're working hard to get that, uh, to get that started. So that is, uh, that's pretty exciting. Um, Jenny has been with us now for two full months. Despite our best attempts to rattle her, she sticks with us, and she also received a scholarship for the Clerks Camp. So she's saving us money too. Um, we've had a number of discussions, and we'll continue it on tomorrow, uh, about kind of a mini reorganization with the impending retirement of Brenda Matthews and Carrie Cheeseborough's, uh, potential move to DPW. So those have been really, really good discussions. Uh, a lot of, uh, you know, good information being passed between Public Works and City Hall that, uh, you know, people have been there for a long time and, you know, really didn't have a good understanding of processes between the two departments. And I think we all have a much better understanding now and how we can, um, you know, streamline some of those potentially. And, uh, so we may be looking to begin a recruitment for a new- you know, streamline some of those potentially, and so we may be looking to begin a recruitment for a new City Hall individual relatively soon. Hopefully, we're good job description together in the next couple of days, so that's exciting as well. Other than that, it's just, once we have Mark's numbers back for the Sanitary Sewer or on Parkview, that will likely kick off some development discussions about the single family in that area, and yeah, so it's been a good spring so far, that's for sure.
Thank you. And council, I had asked, kind of went around, but does anybody have a committee report that they didn't share, that they want to share?
I probably should mention the Public Works Committee. We had a interesting meeting as my first meeting in Public Works with the farmer's market question. There is a recommendation from the committee to approve the special permit for closure on Parkview that will be eventually coming to the, the council, I understand, so.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else for anyone? Okay. Team building. Listen carefully. It's a long narrative. We all have backpacks. We all are carrying our laptops in our backpacks. And we get to our house or wherever, and we're going to jump on a Zoom meeting with our laptops. And we go to plug in, and that connection can, cannot be made because there is something jammed in the connecting area due to something we were carrying in our backpacks. So we'll just go around and share what would we be carrying in our backpacks that might have gummed up that connection? Devin, Devin?
I, I have a horrible habit of not getting rid of, or throwing away the paper fringe left over from notebooks when I tear out pages.
That's good to know you're still using paper and pen, like, I am impressed by that. You must be a geriatric millennial. Larry, is that your hand raised up there?
Yeah, it is. And it's geriatric also. A melted Hershey's Crackle Bar. Because I'm really big on Hershey's Crackle, so, or the Crackle Bar, so I'm sure that would happen.
Nice.
Yeah, I know. Mine would probably be some piece of fruit, an orange or an apple.
I'm gonna say mine would be probably cookie crumbs that I tried to wrap in a paper towel that for some reason came open when I threw the bag wherever I was coming in the door at.
Oh, so you're just a bag thrower. Okay, gotcha.
Well, I don't throw it, but I drop. It's a hard surface.
Teresa?
Well, I would say because it has happened to me, the water, you know, having put the cap on correctly, and so the water just got out and jammed up all the holes.
Why are iPads don't work?
You know what, after having it sit in rice for about two years, yes.
I'm waiting for Dan to say he's got those dollar bills stuffed in the, the port of.
Oh, I've got something more simple than that. I just didn't have a charged battery.
Oh, so you carry, you carry absolutely nothing but your backpack, in your backpack, but your laptop, is that what you're saying? Okay, just so I get a better understanding. Now I need to put something in Dan's backpack.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
I think there's probably several people on this call that can relate to this. Mine would likely not connect because it was filled with dog hair and cat hair.
Yeah. Add that, too, yeah.
Mine would be fruit snacks. Always fruit snacks.
I, I don't carry a laptop around in a backpack, but Bren said if she does, it would be applesauce. Yeah. That would do it.
I saw her peeking back there. I didn't know if you knew she was there or not.
I don't put anything usually in the same thing. I don't usually put anything in the same pocket as my laptop when I carried around in a backpack or in my briefcase. So there's not really much to get in there, but we'll just see the power cord getting stuck.
Okay.
Well, we all know that I don't carry a power cord with me all the time.
I'm going to go with inevitably whatever my children end up handing to me at that awkward moment, and you don't know where to put it, and it ends up in your laptop bag.
Yeah, every time I clean out the lint trap on my dryer, there's inevitably string cheese wrapper and Starburst wrapper, and yeah, because they, I don't know why, I'm the movable garbage can. They just hand me everything. Here you go, here you go, here you go. Just put it in the trash. It's right there.
Uh, mine would be a very, very, very old granola bar. That probably is still in my backpack, because I'm always fearful I'm going to get stuck somewhere without food, so I always throw a granola bar in my backpack. So I would say there's a granola bar in my backpack right now.
I will go, and mine, which has happened many times, is either a cat or a dog treat, because I have many of those at home. And especially those milk bone styles, they just crumble.
Yeah, they do.
Especially on the way to the dog park.
A bullet, that's the best I got.
Awesome.
Is it just your one bullet, Barney? I mean.
Yeah, Barney. Did Andy say it was okay?
So we're down to the standoff of the two marks.
To kind of Howie, I don't really carry a laptop in a backpack, but yeah, probably something related to the kids, maybe. Maybe they took it to try and play a game or something. I couldn't even find it. I don't know.
Well, I'm very non-electronic, but I had to pick some, well, I guess I'll pick something that take it from something that always Scott might have picked, and I'll say a donut.
That'd be good.
Oh, I wish I would have thought of that one. That'd have been even better.
I, I thought you were going to say like a fishing lure or something. Okay, you guys are awesome. Good job on that one. Our next meeting is June first, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion to adjourn? And it's raining. I just want to let you know it's raining.
And we need it.
We need it.
Hold to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned until next time, and maybe we will see you this weekend.
Yeah.